Did you sit in my chair all this week?
No.
Somebody sat in mine too, because I had to adjust it.
Oh, mine was bumped up.
I was hanging down, I was too low, I don't know.
Is there a laugh hole or something like that?
There was something.
Planning commission. It was like, it was turning off. Turning phones on silent.
I can almost smell diesel smoke when I do that. I think I'm trucking or something.
You might be, but the real question is, is there, was there a tax on that diesel?
Not enough.
Not enough. Who?
Everybody's struggling to get their...
Dragging, oh yeah.
Get your PowerPoints.
PowerPoint.
I got nine o'clock.
What's little Peedy doing, is he Peedy sick? Are you sick or are you doing...
No, I'm actually feeling a lot better.
Really?
It took, it was, I didn't start feeling better until Friday though.
What was it?
It was, it was the flu, but it just, it knocked me down.
Hey, those little kids. Which one did you say?
They just got sick.
Good morning and welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you please join me in the flag sleuth and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item this morning is taking up the Board of Supervisors matters, turn to Supervisor Vanderpoel. Welcome back, glad you're feeling better.
Yeah, well, I wish I would have been able to take some time off, but you know, as you all know that when you're scheduling weeks in advance, it's tough to take time off, but I do feel a little bit better, recovered from the flu that I had, and I tell you, it absolutely is brutal. I, you know, follow all the public health press releases and wash my hands until my skin's dry, but I still caught it, so my, my heart goes out to anybody else who catches it too, because that is brutal, so I guess that's what I get when I have three Petri dishes under the age of four at my house right now. So that being said, I took the opportunity yesterday to go with the Sheriff's Department down to the Pixley Substation to go and check out that facility down there, and for those of you who don't know, I'm sure that Mike Ennis knows it very well, because it was built the same year he was, and that was 1937. But that building has served many functions over the years, it has been a courthouse, it's been a fire station, it's been a community library, and now it is a community meeting room, and also the currently Pixley Substation. So the Sheriff's Department and actually some General Services representatives were there as well, and they really talked about the need that is there, and those walls are made out of adobe, and you can see the straw in some of the places. So there is definitely a need there, and they've had to do some relocations of gang units due to facility constraints down there, but there's absolutely a need there, and so I think that that's something this, this board should look at in the coming years is replacing that substation. I know that our newest substation in our arsenal is up in Orosee, I believe, and doing something to that extent, and maybe even a little bit larger down in the South County to give the County Sheriff's Department a presence down there, I think would be a great, great asset. Congratulations also in the Sheriff's Department to Captain Rob Schimpf, he's our newest captain, he will be sworn in this Friday at 9:00 a.m. Also Friday at 11:00 a.m. is the Tulare Senior Volunteer Luncheon, where many volunteers are honored and thanked for their service to the community of Tulare and its senior citizens. It's always a great luncheon, and I sure appreciate all the work that various volunteers do to help the seniors in the community. And then lastly, the county's biggest event, the valley's biggest event will take place next week, we do not have a board meeting, that is the Farm Show, the World Ag Expo, right in little old Tulare. There will be a ton of people there, hundreds of thousands of people there over a three-day period. Lots of community organizations are involved, and if you're trying to get around Tulare, Paige is always a disaster, but certainly during the Farm Show, I would recommend staying the heck away from it. But good luck to all the participants, and thank everyone for making that such a successful event. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Shackman?
Yes, last night I attended the swearing in of new city man, Visalia City Manager Randy Groom, so that was a nice event. This afternoon I have our Mental Health Board, and tonight I will be attending the annual Seroptimus Ruby Awards, which is a great event where they recognize women helping other women throughout our community. Tomorrow night I'll be speaking to a group of women veterans, and I have my Animal Advisory Committee meeting, and Thursday and part of Friday I will be attending the Visalia City Council Strategic Planning Workshop, just to kind of get an idea what, what lies ahead for the city of Visalia and how we can work, the county can work together with them. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Crocker?
Just to piggyback on Supervisor Vanderpoel's comments about the World Ag Expo, outside of it being a fantastic event, we also have the honor of hosting the Secretary of Agriculture, Sonny Perdue, will be in town for the opening ceremonies, I think most of the day, he's, I think he's got a full schedule, so I think that's going to be a great opportunity for some of us to interact with the secretary and make sure that he understands what our needs are in, in the country's most productive agricultural region. Last night I, I attended the Three Rivers Town Hall meeting, and I know that staff from our Resource Management Agency presented the Community Plan Update, the Draft DIR, and so I just want to thank the staff that, that attended for the, it was a rather lengthy meeting, a lot of good discussion. For the most part, I think everyone was, was fairly civil, so I appreciate that also from the community as well, it's always, I think that's always important to be civil in those types of meetings.
All.
No, yeah, nobody pulled out their gun, so I was positive. And, and so I think there's going to be further discussion of that as, as we continue to go through that process, but I really appreciate staff's effort on that. I know it's been, it's been a four-year project for that community plan, and the finish line is getting closer and closer. And then lastly, I just want to, want to thank our Sheriff's Department and, and our Fire Department as well, there was a drive-by shooting around the corner from my home Thursday evening.
It was me.
Yeah, it was, and you, and you got one of our volunteer firemen, and, and so it was, it's, you know, I think it's, it's important that we had our, our first responders that responded in a, in a very quick time period, but I think it's also important just to remember that there's still activities that are alive and well that are, that are not positive, and we've got to, you know, more than ever keep, keep the pedal to the metal and make sure that we're, we have safe communities. With that, I'd also just like to thank all the departments, Supervisor Worthley and I have met with some departments already, I know there were a lot of calendar invites that went out over the last few days for additional meetings, so I just thank those that we've already met with and thank the others that we're going to be meeting with in advance.
Supervisor Ennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thirty-seven was a little bit ahead, but I think it was, I think it was 1947 when we moved out of our tent out there at Terabell and into the first room of our house, and the first room of our house was made out of adobe right off of the property we bought, so it was an abundance of adobe back then, and if you knew how to do it, like you say, with the straw and leachum and stuff we put in there to make the stuff firm, it turned out to be a pretty nice, pretty nice place to live, the walls were thick, you know, they were about 12 inches thick, so it was pretty nice. I would also like, I'm looking forward to the Farm Show and, and looking forward to seeing our Secretary of Ag, that'll be great, but also thank all of our department heads, all of our elected officials, employees, and everybody that make this county run every day of the, of the week, so thank you guys so much for all your efforts. That's all I have.
You're making it tough on me, Mike. Supervisor Shackman said that she had one more thing she wanted to bring up.
Uh, yeah, on Thursday, January 22nd, in these very chambers, I will be holding a Town Hall type forum for District Three residents. What?
February.
What did I say?
January.
No, next year, January. I forgot, we're in February, thank you. Staff, that's why they're here. February 22nd, we won't be meeting next week, so I thought I'd let folks know, some department heads will be here, I'll give a little overview of what's happening, not only within District Three, but things that affect everybody in the county, so that'll be at 6:00 p.m. on February 22nd.
Can other District people come and, because I've got some complaints anyway.
That's fine, I tried to invite you, but you weren't going to be here.
All right, all right. Last night I spoke at a group, I guess they're kind of the successor to the Grange organization that used to exist out of Elbow Creek Hall, and they, I gave them a bit of a State of the Union talk, and, and the gentleman invited me, said, "Well, you were here a couple of years ago," and I said, "Well, actually, it was eight years ago," but time does fly, and I was happy to do that. As Kyler said, we've been meeting with department heads, I think it's been very productive and helpful for us to, from a relationship standpoint, and then just kind of, you know, understanding what their needs are, expressing the board's position on things, I think it's always very helpful to do that kind of thing. Today we'll be meeting with the RMA Department, which unfortunately conflicts with the, and the appointment of a new judge to the Superior Court here in Visalia, but we did not have that notice in advance. I will likewise miss the swearing in of the new captain, we have a San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority meeting at 9:00 in Fresno, so I'm sorry, I will have to, have to miss that. But we have no meetings the next two Tuesdays because of the Farm Show next Tuesday and then the holiday the following Tuesday, so please enjoy your time off. Now, from meetings, I mean, you've got things to do, I know. Now, at this time, we will have a proclamation recognizing the month of February 2018 as the Grand Jury Awareness Month, and we have in, in attendance today, Superior Court Judge, Judge Aldridge, thank you for being here Judge Aldridge, the Superior Court Executive Secretary Alan Kennedy, the Foreman Howard Stroman, and a number of, of members of the Grand Jury who think this is a church, they sat in the back pews this morning when they came in. And if all of you would please stand up so we could recognize you, please do so at this time. Thank you, and Mr. Stroman, if you would come forward, I have the presentation of the proclamation I could make at this time.
Thank you for being here. You're a big guy. Recognizing the month of February as the Grand Jury Awareness Month in Tulare County, whereas grand juries are a crucial components of California's justice system, and whereas like other California counties, Tulare has a grand jury composed of individuals who dedicate a portion of their time, and they might argue with that about portion, for a full calendar year to serve the grand jury system, and whereas the primary duties of the Tulare County Grand Jury are to investigate and report on local governmental operations, to assure that the responsibilities of these governmental entities are being fulfilled efficiently, honestly, and in the best interest of the public, and whereas the grand jury's fact-finding efforts result in reports that contain specific recommendations aimed at identifying problems and offering ways to improve government operations and enhance responsiveness, and whereas the California Grand Jurors Association and local chapters strengthen juries statewide by providing training, tools, and techniques to assure that each jury operates under the same standards of efficiency and integrity to which they hold their local government, and whereas the reward of being a grand juror is the satisfaction received from working with fellow residents of the county to improve local government for all, now therefore be proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors take great pleasure in recognizing the month of February 2018 as Grand Jury Awareness Month. Signed this day, February 6th, Kyler Crocker, Vice Chairman, Pete Vanderpoel, Amy Shackman, and Steve Worthley, Chairman, and Mike Ennis.
Would the members of the grand jury, is it okay for them to come up?
Absolutely.
Would you come up, please?
What we would probably like to do is get a picture with the grand jury and all the board members afterwards, so.
Yes. You'll just remember. I just want to say that to the Honorable Judge Brett Aldridge, and to Ellen Kennedy, and to the Tulare County Board of Supervisors, we want to extend the grand jury a very hearty thank you for this proclamation on behalf of Tulare County Grand Jury's Awareness Month. We certainly do appreciate it. I just want to state in addition to that, that as you know, the grand jury is a body of volunteers that are assigned the duties and responsibilities of making recommendations for constructive changes, and also finding solutions to a wide range of problems here in Tulare County. We thank you very much for this proclamation, and needless to say, we individually and collectively are honored to be of service to the great county of Tulare. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Can I ask something, you're in the background hiding, you're going to have to come to the front.
You stay with me.
Judge Aldridge, would you, would you, would you get a comment?
I think you've got to come.
There we go. One, and I'm going to move around to get everyone. One, two. One, two, three. One more, just make sure. One, two.
And thanks again, we're going to have to eat and run, but thank you again for this proclamation, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thought my colleague was making a short joke, and I, I was going to comment, I didn't realize he was in the, in the acting business, but I saw him on a commercial at, during the Super Bowl, the Eminem commercial.
I read Eminem.
All right, at this time we have...
You'll see it on my 700 form.
At this time we'll take public comments, anybody wishing to address the board of matters which are within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda, are welcome to come forward at this time, and I do have a request by Trevor Ice from IT, is that correct? Your last name is spelled Ice?
Yes, Ice, just like it's spelled, yeah.
Very good.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, CAO, County Council. My name is Trevor Ice, I'm a Division Manager with TCICT, and just wanted to give a quick plug for the CV Tech Fair coming to the Visalia Convention Center on February 21st. There'll be over 20 distinct vendors there representing a variety of different technologies that we're currently employing today throughout the county in various capacities and forms, so it's just a great opportunity for different members of departments to come out and show their support for the service we provide, but also just learn a lot about what, what it is that we actually do as a department. So there'll be a lot of training opportunities available, we'll have public safety, we'll have project management, we'll have business intelligence, data represented, representation, we'll have communication technology security, and everyone in the county should have gotten an email yesterday with instructions on how to register online, but registration opened up this morning at 9:00 a.m. And doors will open at 8:30 again on February 21st and should be closing at 3:30, and that's again at the Visalia Convention Center. To register, the website is thecvtech.com, and I don't think I'll be there, my third child's due the same day, but you'll have all the representation from the Technology Department as well as a lot of good resources for vendors, so just wanted to give that quick plug.
Thank you, Trevor, and congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
On the walk as well with your wife and your new child.
Of course, yeah.
Any other public comments? We'll then close the public comment period, and we'll move on to our consent calendar. Item number 20 will be handled separately, are there any other items members of the board wish to handle separately or take, yes?
Twenty-two?
Item 22. Did you want to ask a question about it, or is there...
I just made a comment.
Okay, all right. Anything else before the consent calendar? Anything from the public? If not, anything for your motion?
If there's nothing to be removed or corrected in further, I'd move for approval.
Second.
Motioned by Supervisor Vanderpoel, and seconded by Supervisor Ennis, cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous, and we'll take up item number 20.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Spata, County Council, Tim Dorick, Mental Health Director for Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency. What questions may I ask?
Supervisor Crocker?
Not, not really, I didn't really have a question necessarily, I just thought that this was a good three-year overview, and if maybe you could just highlight pages four through six and that summarized kind of the, the new things that are, that are going on with the mental health plan, I just thought it was good for the public.
Certainly, Supervisor Crocker. The main projects that are in addition in this three-year plan are two permanent supported housing programs that we are working on in both Tulare and Porterville. We expect the Tulare site to be completed in March of this year, and the one in Porterville to be completed in June of this year. Those programs will add an additional approximately $250,000 operating costs to the MHSA plan. The other big project is the Visalia Wellness Center, which we hope to open late 2018. Operating costs for that will be approximately $600,000. Those are the big projects that we're working on.
Thank you, Ken, appreciate that. Motion to approve?
Thank you.
You have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, seconded by Supervisor Shackman, please cast your vote. Votes are unanimous, and we'll take up item 22, comment?
Oh yeah, I just want to thank staff for the work on this, contrary to what all of the supervisors to the left of me believe, District Three does expand, oh, there's only one, does, does expand outside of the city limits of Visalia, and Avenue 280, other than being an integral farm to market, it's also, you know, connects Kings County to Tulare County and brings a lot of commerce into Tulare County, so this was completed on time and within the allowable budget, so I just wanted to duly note that. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Motion by Supervisor Shackman, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous, and we will now take up our untimed items since we are ahead of schedule. Item number 28 is a request from the Resource Management Agency to approve the Bureau of Reclamation interim renewal contract.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Board, CAO, Sherman Dix, Assistant Director of the Resource Management Agency. What I brought before you today is a fairly routine matter, it's a renewal of an interim contract between the county and the Cross Valley Canal, or the Bureau of Reclamation regarding the Cross Valley Canal. So, give you a little background on that arrangement. CVC, Cross Valley Canal is a water conveyance facility in the southern San Joaquin Valley. It extends from the California Aqueduct to the Kern River, so it connects the two. It's an open channel, has six lift stations that carry water, can go in both directions, east to west, or the opposite direction. It's comprised of seven federal contractors and managed through a series of supply contracts of the Central Valley Project. The CVC contractors are not located physically along, are located physically along the Friant Canal, not directly along the CVC, so most of the water is delivered through a series of exchanges, and the Department of Water Resources provides the pumping facilities, and Bureau of Reclamation provides the power supply. Talking about this piece right here, Cross Valley Canal, here's Friant-Kern Canal and the Aqueduct. There's seven CVC federal contractors, Tulare County, Fresno County, Lower Tualee Irrigation District, Pixley Irrigation District, Hills Valley, Tri-Valley, and Kern Tulare Water District, all located, as you can see here, along the Friant-Kern Canal. The total of the CVC water supply contracts for the federal contractors is 128,300 acre feet per year, and this gives you some background on the breakdown, so Tulare County's portion of that is 5,308 acre feet. Each CVC contractor is currently a party to its own free-party contract between the Bureau of Reclamation, California Department of Water Resources, to receive water from the CVP and then convey this water. The original contract, which we're looking to renew for an interim two-year contract, took place in 1975 through 1976, it was a 20-year initial term. In 1996, we began this series of interim renewal contracts, we are currently on interim renewal 17. This would extend the contract from March 1st, 2018 through February 29th, 2020. A long-term contract is being pursued, most of the holdup is related to environmental component that needs to be finalized, this would eliminate the need for the interim renewals. Tulare County doesn't actually take any of the water itself except for a small portion, all of the 5,300 acre feet is passed through to the subcontractors, Alpa Irrigation District, Atwell Island, City of Lindsay, Hills Valley Irrigation District, Frozzanato Farms LLC, Sausalito Irrigation District, Stone Corral Irrigation District, Strathmore Public Utilities District, Styro Tech Inc., and the City of Visalia. The subcontractors either pump groundwater, receive Friant Division water, or exchange water with other water agencies, since the benefit is to the subcontractors, all the costs, Tulare County acts as a pass-through, so all the costs are pass-through to the subcontractors, including our administration. So, with that, the request is to determine that the interim renewal contract is exempt from SEQA, approve the Bureau of Reclamation interim renewal contract number 1406-200-8293A IR17, to allow the county of Tulare Water Services from the Central Valley Project to the Cross Valley Canal for the period of March 1st, 2018 through February 29th, 2020, authorize the chairman to sign the Bureau of Reclamation interim renewal contract number 1406-200-8293A IR17, authorize the Resource Management Agency and Dennis Keller as our consultant for all Cross Valley Canal issues, and Wiggly Consulting to do all things necessary and proper to comply with the interim renewal process, and direct the clerk of the board to return a certified copy of this resolution to the Resource Management Agency for trans... from CEQA. Approve the Bureau of Reclamation interim renewal contract number 1406-200-8293A-IR17 to allow the county at Tulare Water Services from the Central Valley Project to the Cross Valley Canal for the period of March 1st, 2018, through February 29th, 2020. Authorize the chairman to sign the Bureau of Reclamation interim renewal contract number Authorize the Resource Management Agency and Dennis Keller as our consultant for all Cross Valley Canal issues, and Wiggly Consulting to do all things necessary and proper to comply with the interim renewal process, and direct the clerk of the board to return a certified copy of this resolution to the Resource Management Agency for transmittal to the Bureau of Reclamation. I brought Dennis Keller here to answer any questions you might have regarding the long-term contract, this interim renewal contract, or as well, the process that's in place seeking the long-term.
I was hoping he's going to report upon the next storm coming through.
He might have that information as well, so.
Thank you, Sherman. Are there any questions? One thing I wanted to say, Sherman, we have done extensions to these contracts several times, and we've never, we saw it in our consent calendar. I appreciate bringing it forward and explaining it, because we've never really had an explanation of it. We just, you know, said, okay, and approved it. It was very, very educational for me as a board member, and I'm sure for my colleagues on the board, and for the, for the public. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
I was just going to make the comment. I have lots of questions for Dennis Keller, but none of them related to this agenda item. But I too appreciate the detailed update on this, and I'm glad that we're able to help our irrigation districts by doing this, so.
Question, Supervisor Crocker?
I, I don't know if this can be answered today, but if not, I'd, I'd like a further discussion. But I'd like to see how, how we determine who our subcontractors are. Is that just in 1976, was that the initial determination, and we've just stuck with that? Or what, how does that process look?
Well, I didn't arrive in 1937, but close to that. In the early years of the development of, of water supply, the Kern County districts put together the concept of Cross Valley Canal, and it was a state project contractor-led effort in the early days. Construction started, they wound up short of cash, and so they invited the federal contractors to the table at large, and the ones that you saw up there earlier are the ones that chose to participate. There was a cash contribution that was required. The Board of Supervisors at that point in time, in the blind, took revenue-sharing funds and elected to participate in the process. There was no assignment of any contract at that time to anyone. The county itself had thoughts that there may eventually be a need for water in the Foothills area. The Foothills Growth Management Plan was under development at that point in time. And so the board put up revenue-sharing funds to participate, to the extent of, the initial contract was 3,000 acre feet. Just after that point in time, the assignment came out to, to go ahead and market that water to various entities within the county, which the bulk of those contractors that you see there took, took part of that water supply, took the obligation to pay all of the cost. And, you know, the first year was 1976, that was a 25%, you know, allocation on the west side. 1977 was a 0% allocation on the west side, a 25% allocation on the Friant Kern Canal. Those first couple of years were pretty tough. We still deal with some accounting issues from, from those very first years. But since that point in time, the majority of the subcontractors that you see there have been steady. There was a default by other contractors outside of the county, which allowed for 1,908 acre feet to be made available, which the board elected to go ahead and pick up part on behalf of what was proposed to be the Globe Water District in the River Island area, and then on behalf of the Atwell Island Water District prior to the buyout of, of the lands in Atwell by the federal government under the Drainage Retirement Program. But it was selected based on, you know, a petition to the board to grant a subcontract to that particular entity, had to show need, had to show a relationship to, you know, irrigated agriculture, with the exception of the City of Lindsay, who initially took a thousand acre foot contract, and then they were able to get a Friant contract of their own. So they're reduced down to 50 acre feet. And then the City of Visalia, the City Council of the City of Visalia, determined at that point in time that there eventually would be a need to augment the groundwater supply, and so they opted to take a contract at that point in time. And the City of Visalia's done a number of things since that point in time. A Prop 218, and then a relationship with California Water Service Company, and now a relationship with Tulare Irrigation District to augment the supply of the county. So every one of those contracts was, was a petition to the board to grant a portion of that original 3,000 acre feet to be allocated to them.
And Dennis, if you'd just say your name for the record.
Dennis Keller, 209 South Locust Street, Visalia.
Thank you very much. You have a question to comment? Thank you, that was very interesting, too, in terms of understanding that. Alright. If there's no other questions, any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take action. A motion?
Move for approval.
Motion to approve by Supervisor Innes, seconded by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Unanimously, I should say unanimously passed. I shouldn't just say unanimous, it could have been the opposite way. Alright, at this time, we'll take up our timed item, our 9:30 timed item, public hearing to request from the Resource Management Agency to determine the Tulare County Local Agency Management Program LAMP for On-Site Wastewater Treatment Systems OWTS. Good morning, Mike Washington.
Thank you, Chairman, Board members, CAO, County Council, Mike Washington, Associate Director of RMA. Today for your consideration is the LAMP. We went over this back on the meeting on the 23rd, so I'm going to highlight some of the features, some of the things we're going to have to do through this program. And we do have our consultant here. If there's any technical, scientific questions, North Stars Consultant Kristen McCullough is here for, to answer any of those items you may have. So basically, what we're doing here is the state law imposed new regulations on onsite wastewater treatment systems, which everybody really refers to as septic systems. In order to avoid being subject to a one-size-fits-all type of set of rules, Tulare County must adopt, approve, and adopt a local area management program, and have state approval for the same by May 13th of 2018. And there are certain zoning amendments that are necessary to implement the program. I won't go, I'll go through this fairly quick, but back in 2013 is when the effective date of the new policy was put in place. And agencies had 60 months to, after that date, to adopt the state-approved LAMP. That's why we have, we're looking at the May 13th deadline. And if we don't adopt and have a state-approved LAMP by then, Tier One automatically applies, and those have much more stringent regulations than, than we can do and have a little bit of local control, so that's why we're here today. So basically, this is the timeline of the development. We're sitting at February 6th. Those are the previous meetings and outreach meetings and Planning Commission, previous board meetings. And then as we go forward, we're going to be submitting to the state, if, if your board approves today the LAMP, we're going to be submitting that LAMP to the state for their approval and moving forward. Basically, there's four, four tiers in the program. We're really looking at Tier Two, which is a optional program that we, we can do, which is the LAMP, that will allow us to utilize that rather than the Tier One, and that's why we're here. We went in further detail last time on this, so we'll just walk through what we're looking at. The, the LAMP consists of three parts, with the responsibilities and duties, regulations, which we basically follow the plumbing code, and, and, and it's with additions that meet the Tier One requirements, or substantially meet the Tier One requirements that we're able to do. And then the guidance manual that we'll be developing going forth with after, after this, this approval for the LAMP. We still have to get the guidance manual together as far as how we're implementing it, and, and the real details of how, how we proceed going forward. So basically, what we're looking at is, this applies to 3,500 gallons per day or less of, of domestic strength flow, basically. We're, we're requiring the qualified professional has to design all new systems. This includes either people from registered health specialists, or PEs, PG soil scientists, or, or the Tulare County Building Official, or Designee as well. Requires enhanced setbacks from public water systems, wells, and surface water intakes. Has requirements on slope areas that they, they can't be graded in 30%. There, this is one of the key factors, is qualified professional has to conduct a site evaluation for all new permits and repairs. That's an onsite inspection that they have to go through. Another key is one acre minimum for new subdivisions. If we're not to adopt this, there's requirements on there, if we're not to, it defaults to two and a half acre minimum, which is, really would throw a lot of difficulties and challenges. It would just be too onerous. Also, soil depth shall be determined through use of soil profiles based on, on onsite excavation. There needs to be separation from groundwater, five feet for trenches and 10 feet for seepage pitch, so you have to prove up that. Maximum trench width is three feet and 10-foot depth. And there also has to be 100% replacement area, so when you're putting a new system in, you have to, onsite, you have to have, allow for 100% replacement area designated. New, new things, too, is there's some additional testing for the septic tank and, and the access riser needs to be watertight. There's a testing procedure that will, that is new, that we'll be implementing. Chambered and bundle expansion and other types of units can be utilized to, for smaller lots. So there are some types of things that we can look at, alternatives, that, that can fit things in when there's a, when there's a site limitation on that. There's also adding screening to avoid having solids going into the pipeline, this is some new upgrades, types of things. Professional requirements for the installer, however, there will be provisional to allow property owners to do their installation, provided they meet the, the requirements of the, the design. Seas pools are prohibited, and any, anything that requires supplemental treatment, that, which includes disinfection, nitrogen reduction, those will all be permitted through the Regional Quality Control Board. Implementation, the county's proposing to implement this program through amendments to the ordinance code, and as I said previously, the development of an onsite wastewater management guidance manual. The manual provides the requirements regarding the program permitting processes, site evaluation requirements, and design submittal requirements. Amendments to the ordinance code are required to be consistent with the state board's adopted policy and the proposed program that we're bringing to you today. These include certain amendments that pertain to Sections 1701, 1320 through 1701, 1740, regarding minimum lot size, setbacks, and testing requirements under the LAMP, and then also under Section 4, 131520, for locating affluent systems near surface water intake points. So those are the, those are the text amendments that we're looking at, basically an overview of that. We did receive a late comment just yesterday, as our consultant was driving down from the division of drinking water, so we added a footnote. So just for the record, we're, we're putting this in here, this varies from the plan that you have, we're adding a footnote to one of the tables regarding the setbacks and, and separation distances. So I just wanted to get that in the record. And in conclusion, there, there will be additional challenges to citing and, and costs to install these new and replacement systems. The county will be required to prepare and submit annual reports to the board, the Water Board. It involves data collection, we're going to have to track complaints and resolutions, lists of the, the pumpers, the septic pumpers, numbers and locations of all the permitted new systems, and any requested variances. There can be some requests for some variances on these, so we need to track all of that. That's on an annual basis, and every fifth year, we have to submit a program evaluation, which includes a water quality assessment report to make sure that these, these, these things that we're proposing that, that are different than the Tier One, but we say it complies and, and will protect our groundwater, we need to prove up every five years that what we're doing is, is maintaining the, the healthy groundwater and not, not contaminating that. So, again, the alternative of doing nothing, we automatically default to the Tier One system after May. So what staff is requesting is that you hold the public hearing to receive testimony and then approve the requested actions as recommended by the Planning Commission to adopt the LAMP and propose amendments to the ordinance code as detailed in your board packet. So that would conclude staff's report.
Any questions? Yes, Supervisor.
I'll just make a quick comment. Thank you for the, the presentation, and I do have to say that this was a lot less graphic than the presentation that was presented at the Water Commission. I think the audience would have really enjoyed the graphics.
I do have that PowerPoint.
You might want to bring that up, in case anyone's really interested in the details of septic systems, but.
Yeah, run the three-minute clock.
I, I really do, I really do appreciate the presentation and the approach by our staff to make sure that we take advantage of what's right for Tulare County, and, and what might not be right in a very geographically diverse state. The one-size-fits-all approach is that Tier One, and, and I think that this protects us from having to fall under that. But still, most importantly, protects our residents and allows them to have safe waste disposal and waste systems, and also clean water, so thank you.
You have a question or comment? Supervisor Crocker?
I thought you had a video you were going to show us.
I will share that with, I chose.
Email it to them.
Put it online.
If this was a later meeting, I maybe would show that clip.
I, I was just going to say, before I open the public hearing, that I realize that the alternative, this, well, I remember with the first presentation we had, which I think occurred before our two number, two members came on the board, was an active management system. It required pumps and gauges, and it was much more expensive to install, and there was an ongoing expense of maintenance and repairs and inspections and all that. But, but I do see an, an even greater upside in that, is that we have always had great confidence in our engineered systems. And I think what this does is sort of tie a bow around that and verify that, which will, I hope, enable us to look at the utilization of these systems more frequently in our unincorporated communities, especially where we have come up with water systems, so that we no longer have to have someone's individual well and their septic system on the same lot. Instead, we have a, we have a, an isolated water supply, and now the ability to perhaps allow these, as a means, a mechanism by which we can allow construction in our urbanized, but non-incorporated areas, I think is, is something that we will be able to look at in the future, whereas there, in the past, it was almost like, you know, if you're going to go to a septic system, we don't want it. And I think the verification that this is not going to be, you know, impactful on people's health, that we can protect the water table and still allow growth in our unincorporated communities may be very helpful. So with that comment, we will now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on this matter is welcome to come forward this time. Please give us your name and address. And either microphone is available to any speaker.
Good morning, Board. My name is Pedro Hernandez. Today, I'm hailing from 1912, East, Norris Drive East out of Fresno. I just have a couple of questions that I'd just like to ask. Hopefully, to receive some response from staff. I wasn't able to attend the public hearings in early January, so I just have some questions, and hopefully the board will also consider these before approval as well. First of all, you know, let me just get this out of the way. This LAMP program is, you know, a very positive step forward to like overall groundwater management, which is an issue for especially unincorporated communities here in the county. And also movement away from the Tier One to more like individualized and more regionally specific management is, I think, also the right path for Tulare. Just on that note, though, I, I do just would like some clarification whether or not this new setback requirement would affect the availability of variances for unincorporated communities. I know with the updated community plans and legacy plans, there is at least potential for some growth in existing unincorporated communities, and I'm, I'm just wondering if that would affect, you know, potential growth, because many of the communities have lots that are on, are smaller than one acre. Furthermore, I'm wondering if this would also affect repairs for existing septic tanks. So if, if staff could at least provide some clarification, I think that would, you know, really enlighten everybody here. And then just finally, I think the data that is, that is collected through this program should be publicly available. You know, I know there is reports to the Regional Water Quality Board, but I think the county would just also benefit from the public availability of issuance of variances and also reportings of failing septic tanks. So, I'll cede my time, and thank you again.
Thank you very much. Those were good questions. Anybody else wishing to address the board this time? Not, we'll close the public hearing, and Mike, can you respond to those questions?
Sure. There is a variance process, that it's looked at a case-by-case, that potentially could be able to do that. As far as, if it doesn't meet the requirements, it can go, they can go to the Regional Water Control Board to have it done through there, where there could be alternative type. Control Board to have it done through there where there could be alternative types of treatment processes to be able to get that done. And as far as lot creation, this is for new lot sizes or for new lots being created. Existing lots still have the right to develop, but they do need to meet certain criteria, so...
But the setback requirements are not a hindrance to development in those 50 lots?
Yeah, you have to, you have to look at, on a case-by-case basis, which we like to do in the county all the time anyway, because everything is individual, really. And again, there's allowances for variances. That's one of the things that I mentioned earlier that we track. If we're doing variances, then we're truing up later on to make sure that what we've allowed is still working properly.
The other question was about repairs of existing systems.
Same thing. I mean, it's the same answer for that, that they can do the repairs on, but again, if for whatever reason it's not meeting that, we could go to the Water Control Board to have some sort of an alternative system put in, proposed.
All right. Any other questions? Not entertained a motion?
We'll do approve.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Crocker, second by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes, and the motion is unanimously approved. It'll take us to our, continuing on with our untimed items, and the item number 29, a request from the board supervisor staff to receive input and provide direction regarding the 2017-18 state legislative platform.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board, C.A.O., Council, Ms. Flores, Baldwin and Benton. This is Julieta Martinez, Chief of Staff to the Board of Supervisors, along with Ms. Denise England, Water Research Program Director, and we are here today to discuss some amendments to the 2017-2018 state legislative platform. To give you some brief background to go with this brief presentation today, the actual platform was adopted last year around February 28, 2017, by your board as a two-year working document. You have a draft platform before you. Also, this PowerPoint is in front of you, as well as copies to the table left of me for the public. What we're going through in this PowerPoint is just the items that we either updated, made any changes or added. So today, we're reviewing only the items that we are suggesting any amendments to, and again, if you have any questions, feel free to stop us or at the end, make your own additions or suggestions. So number one, agriculture, increased funding for dairy digestion program, California Department Food and Ag. In the highlighted is the language that we added, CDFA did receive some funding last year in 2017. They plan to allocate between 65% to 80% of the funds to support digestion programs on California dairy operations. This is something that's been on our platform, not only in this two-year working document, but in the years prior to, as this county is always supportive of dairy digesters or other programs that are needed for our agricultural needs. So there will become funding available, and we are gonna, you know, hope, push, or support people that would like some funding.
Before you go on, I'm aware of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District also receiving a sizable grant from cap and trade funds, and I'm almost certain that there was an allocation that was dedicated also to this purpose, so we should probably add that as an additional source of revenue for people to be looking at in terms of seeking funding.
Thank you. Forest management, the description hasn't really changed, except we're updating the numbers. We still have many dead trees, the grand total, 129 million dead or dying trees with 25.2 in our county alone. Hope you can see that. So we're still asking for active forest management, we're still supporting legislation for local assistance, financial resources, regulatory relief, and any help we can get. As you are aware, we have a task force, we have Supervisor Worthy who sits on the state task force, so not many changes to this item as it is ongoing.
And so this one is domestic water and wastewater infrastructure and creating sustainable operation and maintenance revenue streams. The challenge really hasn't changed, that these communities typically are not able to self-fund themselves with an affordable water rate, and so a need to fund ongoing operation and maintenance so that those repairs can be made, so that it's not a future huge capital improvement grant project. However, the solution has changed. Last year, your board took a support position on SB 623, a moning bill that laid out a framework for fees to support ongoing operation and maintenance, and the governor actually included most of those provisions in the 2018-2019 budget, so it appears there will be a funding stream. We will continue to keep an eye on how that rolls out and how those rules and regulations actually play out at the state water board, and also paying attention to how much is skimmed off the top for administration of their program. Streamlining the funding process, we added new language here, just to, checking my notes here, to clarify the issues. We talked before about streamlining governing, new governance formation, and this goes a little farther to streamline the actual application process for the applicant. The state board has taken the position that they streamlined it for the state board, and so often, projects that would never qualify for SRF funding, because that's federal funding and it requires payback, our communities typically can't even afford a zero-interest loan, and so asking them to do NIPA for federal funding both takes up time and dollars, because it's all grant-funded, and so allowing a more flexible process that is more streamlined, tailored to the actual project and what funding sources that project would actually be able to access. This was deleted because we are in receipt of the Prop 1 DAC or WIM involvement program funding in the amount of 3.4 million, and that program will be kicking off probably the end of next month, so that one's taken off. This one was added, this is the Merrill Water Bond, there's a couple of water bonds, one being done legislatively and this one done through a petition. This one actually provides quite a bit of funding here in the central San Joaquin Valley. It provides some significant dollars to fix the Friar Kern Canal and the subsidence that that piece of infrastructure has experienced, and it's also funding wastewater recycling projects, which probably will be one of the key components for this area to become compliant with Sigma, as well as some disadvantaged community drinking water and wastewater projects and watershed improvements.
Government Finance and Operations, this was actually requested as an addition by our library. The governor's 2018-19 budget proposal for libraries includes an increase of 2.5 million in the general fund for literacy programs, 5 million for broadband equipment, 3 million to expand capacities for libraries, and 1.5 million one-time funds for online systems. Tulare County Library has actually been in receipt of these funds in the past, so we wanted to add this language as they're increasing the budget this year, so that we can support them in their ongoing applications to fund the Read to Succeed literacy program. And again, this is a new item, it wasn't in there previously. Health and Human Services, IHSS and the MOE, the description is very much the same and the challenge remains, as Supervisor Worthy and the whole board is aware, with our involvement when CSAC, they were heavily lobbying for the counties to get assistance from the governor's office and the state to help alleviate the burden that was being placed on us. So highlighted, an agreement was reached for the 1718 budget, including provision SB90, to provide revenues for counties to offset the nearly 600 million that was shifted from the state. Although an agreement proposal was included, 11.2 billion for IHSS, there's still potential for significant changes in the 1920 budget. So although there is a sort of temporary agreement in place right now, it's not long-term, so we want to continue to support our fellow counties, CSAC and the state to work with us to find a more permanent solution. County Veteran Services Office, the only note we wanted to add there was that there was allocated 5.6 million in the 1718 budget, but we do want to continue to support their efforts for future funding needs. Homelessness, we kind of just changed a little bit of the description here. Communities in Tulare County and throughout California have experienced increases in the number of homeless persons in recent years. Tulare County is estimated to have over 360 homeless persons. Although there are many organizations committed to serving homeless persons and reducing their prevalence, resources are lacking. The absence of available and affordable permanent housing, emergency shelters, transitional housing, and other infrastructure to reduce homelessness also remains significant barriers. As you are aware, we are having our own difficulties in the county, as well as neighboring counties, our cities and unincorporated areas, with a homeless problem. Code Enforcement, Sheriff, this board, IHSA, they've all formed a partnership, created the task force, and are working together to try to find a more permanent solution by offering all these persons resources. Of course, we need the state to help out with this, we need some funding for this, so we want to continue to support all the efforts. So a new solution we also added is support homelessness efforts such as securing SB2 funding that will help aid in combating the issue of homelessness by providing affordable housing to the homeless population of Tulare County, although I also understand that as we keep going throughout this, housing will become one portion, there are more needs, mental health, as we mentioned before. So this is a topic I foresee might stay on this platform a little bit longer. Transportation, as you know, SB1 was passed last year in hopes that we will get some funding allocated to help our local roads. Tulare County is projecting an increase in revenue of 11.8 million. The twist here is that efforts are underway to repeal SB1 during the November 2018 election. It was brought to our attention by some CSAC staff. We're watching this item to see where it goes, so last year, we were lobbying for this package, it was approved, but now we are showing some interest in keeping it, because it does at least help out the county. As you know, our roads are heavily trafficked by trucks and people and workers, and so we do want to continue to support this package. With that being said, we would appreciate your input and any direction that you have regarding this 2718 state platform. If agreeable, we would ask that you approve the amendments and any other suggested changes that you have. With that, we would also ask that you select and approve your priorities for the annual state advocacy trip.
Okay. Before we move to our members, I just wanted to say, it seemed more than ever this year that our agenda aligns in many ways with CSAC's efforts on behalf of the counties, and so the way this currently operates is that we adopt the platform, and then as things come along, because we've already adopted a position, it allows our staff to prepare letters, support, and so forth, or opposition, as the case may be. But what I'm suggesting, I think we should do after we get through with this, we should actually share our report, this document with CSAC, so they have it on file, and that we also consider sort of stepping up our game. I think it's been some time since we've actually gone up to Sacramento to testify at committee meeting hearings and so forth, and I think we should, you know, if, some of these issues are of such a significance that we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can, working with our lobbyists and with CSAC staff to, you know, make ourselves available. Oftentimes, it's kind of limited to sort of a pro-centric Sacramento area, because of the proximity and so forth, those counties around Sacramento, but it's good for our legislators to hear from other parts of California, and I think we should, you know, maybe look at doing that. So with that said, are there any other comments or things that, Supervisor Crocker?
Music to my ears, Supervisor Worthy.
I'm glad.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's great. I just add, have a few additions I think that we need to include. I don't have all of the details, but I know Assemblyman Grayson is working on a bill, he's out of the East Bay area to alleviate some of the sequoia issues on infrastructure projects, and I think whether it's for our roads or for some of our water projects, I think that can be highly beneficial, where there's, where there's more flexibility. I think with SB2 on the domestic water and wastewater infrastructure, including an amendment to SB2 to allow for water and wastewater infrastructure, and RCRC has provided me with some language that we can utilize for that. I think on the transportation front, with the, there's a, there's a couple of state constitutional protections for SB1, I think that's critical that we support that effort, that that's, that was part of the package, that make sure that we, that these funds are not raided for some other general fund purposes. It's created for a specific purpose and that we can utilize those dollars.
I might follow up on that, that report at the last CSAC meeting, that when the SB1 was passed, much of that was protected, but there's an estimated 30% of the funding that was not protected, which is why it's critical to do exactly what you're saying, which is to make sure that none of this can be raided by the legislature.
And then the last point is, under the alcohol and drug, mental health treatment, one of the solutions suggests sponsoring legislation, and I just suggest that we add sponsor slash support, like we've done in some of the others. There may already be legislation that we can just add our, add our voice to.
Anything else, anybody?
I would just like, you know, I think they're all important issues, I would, of course, being Chair of the Homeless Task Force, and homelessness is really in the forefront of many communities right now. I would, I would like to see this take a priority on the list. And as Mr. Vanderpool pointed out, when you said 360 homeless persons, I think that's probably maybe just in one city, probably like Porterville or something like that, and I think it's much more than that.
You're sort of talking about priorities, and another one I think we should talk about is SB 623, and again, I think there we can be very helpful, because we have some of the poorest people in Tulare County paying some of the, not, they are paying the highest water rates in the county, if not the state, and so as we look at trying to expand their systems, fix their systems, you know, we're seeing that there's increased cost associated with that, and to burden those folks with even more dollars is just really very, very, very difficult. So the need of providing this, I mean, that's, and the neat thing about this bill, you might expect that agriculture would be in opposition to it, but they have supported this bill, so this is sort of a win-win situation. Agriculture supports this, it would help our unincorporated communities, and I think this should be one of our highest priorities. I think we could be the poster child for this particular kind of legislation, going to my point about making ourselves available to testify and support this.
I agree, wholeheartedly.
Anything else?
So so far, I have homelessness and SB 623, water as priorities. Do you have any others you want to list? Are you still interested in this thing for forest management?
I think the forest continues, needs to be a priority, we just have to keep pushing on that. We have some stuff coming up later on today, which is very good news, helpful for us as we move forward in protecting our roads and systems and so forth, but with the amount of dead timber, and it's gonna start falling now, it's, the danger up there is very great, so I think we just have to keep on that.
Yeah, so if we, if, based on the conversation, I think those would be the three highlights that we'd want to really focus in on, water, homelessness, and forest management, fire protection, that kind of bunch, and specifically calling out SB 623 on the water.
Anything else?
I was just gonna say, I agree with that approach, and I, on the transportation front, I don't necessarily think that needs to be at the forefront of what we're doing. I think we've highlighted the key issues, and the transportation issue brings up something interesting, and that is going to be whether or not the public ultimately ends up repealing SB1, and should they do so, I think what we talk about in advocating for a comprehensive package on a go-forward basis, I think transportation becomes more of a priority, depending upon the actions taken by the voters later on this year, but it certainly is a priority. We need help on our roads, and I think on the federal level, that's where we can look more towards the transportation and the road support that we need in advocating for a carve-out in maybe the farm bill or something to that extent, but at the state level, you know, I don't think we need to be active on transportation until the voters act.
And let me just tell you, I, on your behalf, as the representative on the executive committee and the board of directors, I brought up that very point, because this is very high on their list, so, I mean, in a sense, we don't need to take a lead, because this is probably the number, IHSS and this transportation are probably the two most important things we're concerned about this coming year. But what I pointed out to them, the problem with SB1 is not that the counties don't appreciate the money and need the money for their transportations and the cities and the state of California, but in typical fashion, it's the way it was done, and there's an allocation. So instead of all the money going to transportation projects, as we think of them, pavement, for instance, you know, maintenance in our road systems and our highways and our bridges, there's a huge carve-out that goes to transit, you know, so the people who are putting the gas in their tanks and they're paying the increased gas tax, they're paying the increased registration on their cars, instead of 100% of it or 95% of it, less of what administrative costs might be, go- cost might be going to actual fix the roads, there's a huge carve-out that goes to transit. And I think that's what makes people upset, is that, you know, the state of California says we're fixing something, but then they just, you know, watch over here, but by the way, over here, we're doing something different, and that's not what people want. And I think that's the challenge going forward. And we've brought that up in the meeting, and that's funny because I made the comment, and many other members of the boards of supervisors made similar comments. But as Pete says, this is something, it's very important for our, I mean, all road departments throughout the state of California see this as a life and death matter for them in terms of road maintenance. But there is this issue, you know, the public is going to weigh, may weigh in on this, and that's, and that, you know, they will speak. So, we'll see where that goes. But I agree, we don't need to take the lead on this. CSAC has taken the lead. We can, you know, we took a vote of support, and it was one vote, the opposition from Orange County, I think. Other than that, the entire fifty-seven counties voted in favor of it. So, anything else? All right.
So, if...
Paul, do you have anything they would like to say or add to the, Mr. Washam?
Yeah, I'd just like, the first item you talked about, the CDFA, just give you an update a little bit on that because there is, there's a lot of money at stake for our dairy industry there. Last year, there was thirty-five million allocated, and there was eighteen projects awarded, and the county received twelve of those eighteen for about nineteen million dollars. Now, this year going forward, you're looking at double that, that sixty-five to eighty million set aside for that. And we've already been working with proposed projects. We've been doing some, getting the entitlements all lined up because these have to be already entitled to be able to go after it. The grant deadline is actually February twenty-third, so the award should be announced in June of this year or July. So, there's a lot at stake there. So, it's very important for our industry, our agricultural industry, that we support that. I just wanted to give that a little update.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Julieta, you want to say something?
If there are no further comments.
I think we have one.
There is a comment. I'll wait.
Hello again. My name is Pedro Hernandez with Leadership Counsel for Justice and Accountability. I'd like to just provide some updates with SB six twenty-three. On the merits of my organization, has been very involved with bringing the community members most affected by the issue up to Sacramento and being involved in local and regional politics around supporting the issue. And, you know, if you aren't interested in coming up to some testimonies, there is going to be a hearing March fourteenth and fifteenth around the Safe and Affordable Drinking Water Fund, which is the general name of the policy. The number, SB six twenty-three, will change if the policy is incorporated as a trailer bill into the governor's budget. So, just to kind of provide little updates with the terminology around that as well. And as well as with the incorporation for the budget, it is currently in the draft budget. So, the hearings in March would be to kind of move that away from the draft budget into the finalized budget. And as well as, this new budget timeline has changed the kind of final approval to about June. That would be when we would know if, you know, this policy would be statewide as well. So, just for that updates as well, we're already working with community members in Tulare County and all the other counties that we work with towards that specific date and hearing. But if, you know, if there's anyone in this room or anyone, you know, on the board that would be interested, that is just an opportunity to advocate for, you know, this statewide policy, which would, you know, benefit all of California because water is a human right in the state, but would be particularly beneficial to Tulare County. So, thank you.
All right, Julieta.
So, with that being said, if there are no further comments, I ask that you please approve the amendments and suggested changes you made to staff today, including the addition of the Grayson bill to alleviate sequoia infrastructure. SB two, the water include the amendment, let's see, I'm trying to make sure I got all your comments. Transportation, alcohol and drugs, add the addition of sponsor slash support. And then I have the priority issues of SB six twenty-three water, which he just mentioned, could become the Safe and Affordable Drinking Water Fund, active forest management and homelessness. And want to double check that you're okay, because when we did the solution homelessness, we were looking at it as standpoint from combating the issue by providing affordable housing to the homeless population. But do you want that to be the central focus or just in general? Any resources we can get?
I think that's fine, because we can build on that. And there are other, affordable housing has various connotations. One of the northern counties of California has done an entire project where they brought in, you know, tuck shed type buildings. And, you know, so some people think, oh, that's, you know, they poo-poo that as being a bad, but, you know, I tell people, there's something between LEED certified housing, which is costing five hundred thousand dollars for an apartment unit to build, and living under a bridge, right? And what they have found is that the people who have moved into these facilities are the biggest, you know, they're the biggest proponents for it. They're very excited about having a place where they're safe, where they have a place to sleep, and then they can provide showers and so forth for these folks. And so, I mean, there's a lot, when you talk about affordable housing, it's not, it's not a one-size-fits-all type of thing. There's a lot of things that can be done under that, and I think that's fine. And we can, if there's other, you know, ancillary things related to homelessness, we certainly are going to support that.
And they're usually involved in some type of program where they're being managed and given the skills to move out of that situation.
So, there's no...
And the other comment was just to support the constitutional protections on transportation.
Yes, right. That's a very important one, yeah. Which is also very high in CSAC's list. Right? Entertainer motion?
Move for approval.
Motion by Supervisor, and a second by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes. And the vote is unanimously in support. Thank you. Good job. Well done. All right, we will move on to item number thirty, a request from the Sheriff's Department to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Article Five of Chapter One of Part Five of the Ordinance Code of Tulare County. Being introduced by someone.
Oh, there's Assistant Sheriff Sigley.
Assistant Sheriff Sigley comes forward.
Nice, he's Buzzbee out of costume and street clothes.
Kind of like, what's my line? Nobody wants to stand up.
Grand entrance.
No, Assistant Sheriff Sigley, on behalf of Sheriff Boudreaux, we gave a presentation on this, I believe, at the last board meeting.
Right. Any questions or comments to Supervisor, I mean, to Assistant Sheriff Sigley?
I thought the presentation was very thorough and showed the need for this policy, and I'm happy to move this thing forward, and I would move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Shuckley. And please cast your vote. Vote's unanimous. Well done.
Thank you. That presentation, that converted.
That was nice.
That's why you're Assistant Sheriff, so you're on top of it. Okay, item number thirty-one is a presentation given by the Resource Management Agency regarding short-term rentals. Hot topic.
It is a hot topic in Allen's worth these days.
Thank you, Mike Washam, Associate Director RMA. Yesterday, for your consideration, is really asking for direction from your board on this matter. And we'll just walk through this. Tulare County is home to Sequoia National Park and the Giant Sequoias. Many, many tourism, tourists come to enjoy those national parks as well as our own Bosch Park. But with that, vacation rentals have existed for many years in Tulare County, and they've always been legal because we don't define between restricted property owner from renting their entire house out regardless of the period of time. Therefore, whether they rent for six months or ten days, there's no distinction in our zoning ordinance. All houses that are rented for a period of less than, or thirty days or less, are required to pay TOT. As such, all short-term rentals properties are required to register with a tax collector. And I think there was a presentation a few weeks ago regarding that process and the taxes that we're collecting on that. The number of short-term rentals have perificated, sorry, in recent years with the abundance of the online vacation rental websites, Airbnb, VRB app, and those types of things. And it's made it much easier for private homeowners to advertise and rent their properties. So, this rapid growth has some residents raising concerns with respect to neighborhood character, the availability of long-term rental stock, and public safety. So, the RMA has attended multiple town hall meetings up in Three Rivers to listen to residents' concerns and answer their questions regarding the zoning ordinance as how it relates to short-term rentals. Concerns raised by some of the members of the community, including noise, rental density, water, traffic, parking, septic system capacities, and there's been a decline of school enrollment in Three Rivers, and they attribute that to short-term rentals rather than having long-term residents in those properties. It's important to note that the zoning ordinance makes a distinction between the rental of an entire home and a bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfasts are defined in our ordinance as a single-family owner-occupied dwelling or other structure on the same property in which overnight lodging and breakfasts are provided for a fee. Bed and breakfast homes with one or two guest rooms are allowed by right. If you have three or more, then you come in for a special use permit. So, just to distinguish that characteristic between a short-term rental where you're renting the whole house out as opposed to providing a meal and the owner is still living in that structure. It also should be noted that nothing limits subdivisions or homeowner associations from adopting covenant conditions and restrictions against short-term rentals. However, the enforcement of that and through that would be through a civil matter outside the jurisdiction of the county. But oftentimes, homeowner associations will restrict that type of rental of units or houses. Looking at what some of the other counties are doing in our area, Fresno, Kings, Merced, and Madera have no restrictions regarding short-term rentals at this time. In fact, the Madera Board of Supervisors recently adopted language to clarify their zoning ordinance. They state that the rental of an entire single-family dwelling, regardless of ten-year length of tenancy, is a permitted use in all residential zones. So, they clearly are just allowing it everywhere. Throughout other jurisdictions, most of the counties, the vast majority, don't have anything that specifically addresses it. However, some do have standards or restrictions, and those include anything from requiring a business license to a special use permit, or even some have, beander, have a moratorium on it. So, it runs the gamut. Some of the cities are even more so. Palm Springs has very tight regulations, and it's very costly for someone to rent out a house. There's full-time staff. There's two full-time short-term rental code enforcement officers in Palm Springs, and their full-time job is just regulating this. And it costs a homeowner about twelve hundred dollars a year just to be able to rent out their house. And they can only rent it out thirty times a year, I believe is the limit in Palm Springs. So, there's, so it runs the gamut from nothing to very stringent regulations. So, what we're looking for really is a little bit of guidance. Before we go down one road or another, or no road at all, we want to get the direction from your board. So, really, there's about five ways we can look at it. We can look at the status quo, which is currently, they register with the tax collector. And that form could be a little bit more robust than it is because right now, it's just the facts. We could put out some information and some basic requirements or standards, so to speak. Or we could require it to get a business license to be able to do that. And that could, would allow more regulations and more standards and requirements involved in that. Then the next step up from that would be requiring an administrative use permit, and that would be handled through the RMA. And that would still allow, would be able to put the restrictions in the ordinance code as far as what's allowed, requirements, those types of things. And what we're looking at is the concern, like, say, septic systems. The concern is that people are advertising twenty people, and it's a two-bedroom house that they can rent out for twenty people. And the concern is that you're overtaxing the septic system. The septic system, normally, a house is designed for approximately two people per bedroom and two additional people. So, like, a three-bedroom house would be able to accommodate normally about eight people. And so, what the concern is, they're advertising twenty people in something that should be able to accommodate eight. The thought is that you're going to overtax the septic system. Now, we've investigated, and we haven't found that to be the case, but there's always potential there. So, that's the type of things we can do. We can limit, we can put a restriction based on the number of bedrooms, based on how many people you can advertise for. We can restrict to onsite parking, things like that, noise things, put out some guidelines to being good neighbors. Some of the counties have good neighbor policies, saying, you know, shut it down by ten o'clock and no parking on the streets and things like that. So, there's a number of processes we could do. So then, again, above administrative use permit would be going to a full use permit that would require a public hearing and planning commission. And then the ultimate one would be to just to not allow it. So, what we're looking for is before staff starts to think about types of policies or options to present your board, we'd like to have a general idea to go because if we're going down the business license ordinance, we want to spend our time on that as opposed to if we're going down a use permit ordinance. So, we're not duplicating or expanding our resources needlessly. So, that's what we're looking at. The other alternative or the other idea that we need to focus on is where this applies to. We could, whether this is applicable to the entire county, unincorporated areas, or if you want to limit this to a particular area like the Three Rivers Urban Development Boundary, we could specify that this just applies in that. And then it could easily be expanded if we need, if there's a need or something in the future. So, those are the basic ideas of what staff is looking for to be able to guide us on this process. And that would conclude staff's report. Open for discussion, ideas, thoughts?
Okay. Thank you, Michael. I'm going to turn to Supervisor Crocker, since it's his district that is sort of the epicenter of this issue. And I know he's had a lot of interaction with the folks up there.
I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we've, I really appreciate the staff's time that we've taken. We've probably been discussing this for close to six months, maybe a little bit longer. And so, I, we've received a lot of input. I'd just add that some of the other things that individuals have brought up as a concern, or, you know, just as a good policy, is to include emergency incident information. So, if there was a catastrophic fire, if you had individuals that were renting a home, they wouldn't necessarily know what the procedure was or evacuation routes, et cetera, you know, contact, basic contact information if there were any type of incident. So, I think that's, there's definitely a vibrant community. I think there's a couple of individuals that may speak on this topic to provide their input on this. But I think overall, the discussion has been fairly good, and I think we can, we can make sure that we have some standards, but still allow property owners to, you know, do what they, what they'd like. And I know we've, this was a topic at a CSAC meeting at the annual conference where there was some discussion regarding, I know a couple of you sat in on that with what Santa Cruz County has done. I know we looked at Mariposa County and what they have implemented, as well as several cities that have very restrictive policies. So, I think that's, you know, finding that fine line where we can have some standards that provide teeth for, you know, hopefully there aren't bad apples. But if there are a few bad apples, then we can take care of those issues, so.
Any other question?
Just some general thoughts, since short-term rentals apply so much in District Two. I wanted to point out, I do think the applicability issue that you bring up on the last slide, I think that's a very important point to consider. If the issue really only is in Three Rivers right now, I think that a Three Rivers-specific policy is very warranted. And should the issue expand to other areas, then we can address it at the time because each area is unique and may have some different nuances that we may want to consider. And in terms of options, obviously, I'm not a proponent of business licenses. That has been an issue that's come before the board before. But I agree with what Supervisor Crocker mentioned, making sure that we have some level of standards, some means of tracking, which clearly we have something already with the auditor's office, and just want to make sure that we enforce that and keep it robust. I don't see us ever going down the road of the Palm Springs code enforcement option. But, you know, I think it's important for public safety, and I don't know that we're going to be able to control the school population in a community with our vacation rental policy. But at the same time, I do think it's important for people to have an understanding in a community as to whether or not... community as to whether or not that's allowed, how often it's allowed, and what the rules are surrounding it. So I think a very specific Three Rivers policies is going to be something that we should look at.
I just want to, we're going to open it up to the public in a moment, but I, maybe it's my legal background, but I like to have factual information in front of me before we, you know, like I don't want to fix something which is not broken. So I can understand people say, we have these concerns. The question is, what is the objective evidence about those concerns? So you pointed out that, well, there's a concern about septic systems and yet your investigation has not proven that out to be a problem. Potentially, it could be a problem, but I don't want to deal with potentials unless there's, you know, I mean, we could be potentially doing anything on that basis of why we would need to take action because potentially, something could happen. I want to know what's actually happening. You know, I think dealing with the sheriff's office, what are the calls for service in the Three Rivers area that's related to these rentals? I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if we don't find things, right? Because I know, I'm familiar somewhat with this, but as somebody who avails themselves of renting houses over at the coast. And in Cayucus, which is a county unincorporated area, there is a lot of this and there's a lot of restrictions on it. But I also know, and we've had correspondence from people, all of us on the board, I'm sure, talking about, hey, I bought this house, it's going to be the house I want to retire to, but until I can retire, this is a way of helping, I mean, I calculated part of my purchasing power was the ability to be able to rent this out and have some money coming in so I could do this. It also provides businesses with money because people come up there and rent these places. And so there's a sense of wanting to encourage it. At the same time, I understand there can be issues of traffic and another problem is, you know, groups of people coming in, staying up late at night. So you have a home and here's a house next to you and it's 12 o'clock at night, there are people yelling and screaming in the backyard. So I can see with our issues, but first, I want to know whether we really have problems or people are expressing concerns about what might happen. And then the, I think what I hear from our board members here is, what is the least restrictive thing we can do to deal with actual problems and allow this thing to move forward? I think, to me, that's a principle from which I would like to look at us going forward. And the idea of maybe it's a pilot project that's earmarked for the Three Rivers area because it obviously has probably the largest population of these types of residences, I think that's probably appropriate, too. And if there's no other comments from board members at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public for people who'd like to address the board on this matter. Please give us your name and address. Good morning.
Good morning. It's fine.
That's fine.
Good morning. I'm Dr. David Wood from Three Rivers. I'm the president of the Three Rivers Village Foundation. The vacation rental issue is a significant problem in the community. I can tell you anecdotally, Mr. Chair, that there's a vacation rental immediately across the little private access road from where I live. My neighbor and I have had to put up a gate so that guests did not show up at 12 and 1:01 and 2:00 in the morning at the mistaken address. Unfortunately, those are absentee owners for that property who do not have a local property management agency. I've had to do things like go over in the evening and suggest to people that pouring gasoline on charcoal under a dead tree was not a really smart idea. I've had to go over and, you know, instruct little girls who were barefoot on a rock formation, which is where rattlesnakes live and hibernate, that that's not a safe thing and their parents weren't there. So we have good players who are property owners who manage their property onsite. We have good players who have registered as bed and breakfast operators. We have people who have either built or acquired a property that they manage because they're Three River residents. We also have people who are either Three Rivers residents or property owners from outside Tulare County who actually do use a property management company so that there are reasonable ways of getting people socialized to how to be there. And then unfortunately, we have people like, for example, my neighbor who lives in Orange County who has absolutely no sense of anything. And that requires then my neighbor and myself intervening periodically with guests who are, you know, endangering themselves and/or the community. In addition, the one thing that was not mentioned is that not only are we in a drought, but we also, many of us are on wells. And in my particular circumstance, again, anecdotally, because you're asking for verified problems, you know, there are three homes on that well. Two of us live there and we know how to use the water. The third is not. And when the vacation rental allows as many as 18 and 20 guests there and those people are accessing the same water from the same well, there's an issue with utilization. So I think that in keeping with what Supervisor Vanderpool said and Supervisor Crocker, you know, it does make sense to address this issue at least initially in terms of Three Rivers. I don't think that Three Rivers would disagree with the least restrictive approach necessarily, but I think that there is a need to develop a more formal way of dealing with this. The traffic to Sequoia National Park has increased dramatically over the last couple of years to the point that there were now 2.2 million guests at Sequoia Park this very last year. Where I live, which is a mile and a half away from the gateway to the park, there are times when I cannot get onto Highway 198 because the traffic is backed up like two miles from the entrance to the park. So the trend is increasing visitors to the park, which is excellent for Tulare County. The trend is increased, you know, commercial activity because of all of those guests, but I think the county also is perhaps being short-changed in terms of transient occupancy tax. I think that there are some number of providers of these facilities who are not registering and not paying their TOT. I think that RMA has done a really nice job. They've been, you know, that was a very nice presentation, Mr. Washington, thank you. And they've been very good about coming up to Three Rivers and attending town halls. And Supervisor Crocker's been very diligent in responding to, you know, our repeated concerns and addressing them with RMA. But I would respectfully request that you do focus upon Three Rivers as a specific area and that we, you know, move forward with a more formalized policy that gives direction and allows the county to benefit from the tax revenue and allows Three Rivers to retain its character and protects the existing property owners who live there.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Other public comments? Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Sheila Stone. I'm the owner and operator of Sequoia Vacation Rentals, which four years ago, I had three houses and now I have 21 houses. Of those 21 houses, 16 of them are homeowners that have owned their properties for 10-plus years. Of those homeowners, half of them had plans to retire. Multiple ones have gotten sick and ill, can no longer retire to this area because of the lack of medical facilities in Three Rivers. So the use of their home as a vacation rental is very important to them because they do still use their homes fairly consistently, actually. Most of my homeowners use them almost every month at some point in time and a lot of them use them for every single holiday. The areas of community concerns and topics, I'm going to touch on them. Noise, that's a case-by-case scenario. I can be noisy in my own backyard, get complaints from my neighbor. Rental density. You can't buy a house in Three Rivers for less than $250,000 and you don't get rent over 1,200 bucks a month from people. And that's not covering the mortgage, the insurance, the property taxes. So the cost of living is too high for Three Rivers, therefore, we have no rental market. If it's really that big of a concern for people, then we may want to look into a HUD situation. I'm not necessarily a big fan of that type of situation, but this is what people are throwing out. You can't afford to buy, you can't rent anything in Three Rivers for the price that people can pay. Water, I like the comment about the shared well, which I hadn't thought about. Maybe in your policy, you may want to require homeowners that have a shared well have to have an agreement from the other homeowners that are sharing that well. So for example, Cherokee Oaks, that is a homeowners' association. Unfortunately, they let their bylaws expire. It should be their responsibility to fix their bylaws and say, no vacation rentals in that area. I agree with your statement on the other slide, covenants, conditions, and restrictions. But in a scenario, as Mr. Woods, he has a shared well, three homes, he should probably, that homeowner should probably have to have permission from those other two residents in order to operate a vacation rental, which is not something I thought about before. Traffic, we're always going to have traffic. We have Sequoia National Park. It's a fact. The road is busy all the time. Parking, vacation rentals, most of them, pretty much 99% of them have a driveway. So I don't know how that affects any of us. Septic system, I'm sorry, but if you have a septic system and you have an overflow, you can't use that house, period. I just had it happen in another house and we found out the entire septic system was filled with roots. So that house is shut down. So that, again, is a case-by-case scenario. School enrollment, my children have been at the school for five years. School enrollment's been averaging 150 a year over there. It's not changed. It's not gone up. It's not gone down, except for the couple of kids in and out. I don't think it has to do with vacation rentals because I've only been doing this almost four years now. My kids have been there for five years. The school has not changed, but vacation rentals have quadrupled in the number of them. I'm curious as to Madera's County Board of Supervisors, their language. What is your language for single-use homes?
Well, currently, we have nothing. So essentially, it'd be almost identical to what Madera County has said.
Okay. So I like their terminology and I would like that to maybe be a consideration from you guys. And then lastly, status quo, TOT, I'm fine with that. It's no big deal. Business license, I really would like some definitive explanation on what exactly you're going to require of us to have a business license. One of the things that might be considered is if you don't have someone such as a property manager running your property and you live in Orange County, then you cannot run a vacation rental. I can't take any more homes. I would love to take as many as possible, but the fact is, is there's no one to clean the houses. And so you can only get so big without, you know, with house cleaners. So that might be a consideration for the business licenses. I'm not a big fan of the business license situation, but I understand that that may be a situation.
Are you ready to wrap up here?
Yep. Last one is the very one, short-term rentals. I think that if you're going to set a guideline, that it needs to be everybody, not just Three Rivers. Because if you look at the map, the vacation rentals are spreading into Porterville and into Lindsay and into everywhere else. So if you cut us off and shrink our ability to rent houses, they're just going to go into those underlying communities. So if you're going to do something, let's do it for everybody, not just Three Rivers.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comments? Our auditors got things to say to us. Mr. Cook, welcome, sir.
He's independently elected, so maybe we're going to get an off-the-cuff type of commentary from him, maybe.
We'll see what happens. So this is a broad topic. I am going to focus my thoughts specifically to the tax collector office. I do want to point out that of the TOT that's collected, over half of it is coming from the Three Rivers area, but there's growing, there's growth in the Camp Nelson, Springville area. And that's, when you add all those up, that's about three-quarters of where the TOT is coming from. So it's not insignificant. So as you're looking at that, I want to make you aware of that. And just as a tax collector, I keep coming back to the point of what's fair and what's equitable. So if we apply it to one person, we want to be able to apply similar regulations to someone else. That's just one thought. And then in terms of the different scenarios that were mentioned in the staff report, so with the status quo, we've discussed this before, but the TOT has been growing. We've been enhancing our efforts to collect that and make sure it's applied to everyone. And so I think we're trying to do the best we can and we're making progress there. If business licenses were required, the thought there, though, is those have to go through a number of departments, not just our own. And that would actually triple the amount of business license we're issuing. So it's not an insignificant use of resources. It'll require more resources, more work, and touch many departments. Is there one thing else? Oh, just with the business license, if we're just collecting business license with no teeth, no enforcement, I don't know what the point is other than we're collecting money. So I would just ask that.
I'm a tax collector.
If you go that route, there needs to be something behind it.
Good.
That's all I have.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just to point out, the reason I talked about treating, if we did Three Rivers as a pilot project, it was not, that concept of a pilot project is you try something out in a particular place. And then the idea is that if you decide you want to tweak it or change it based upon your experience, then you would probably look at making it, you know, county-wide or mountain-wide or something like that. But the idea of a pilot program is that it's not going to be this way forever, is to try something out. And that's why I had suggested that particular way of doing it. I, you know, I mean, again, there's so many different thoughts, like when the comment was made about having to get permission from your two co-well owners, well, that, good luck with that. That's not going to happen. But on the other hand, if you said no more than what you said, the restrictions on, you know, no more than two people plus two or something like that per bedroom, where you limit the number of people by its very nature, that will, in fact, limit the resource use and so forth. So there are ways of dealing with these things and I'm anxious that we'll come back to the board for their final thoughts and comments, but I have no problem, again, I want to make sure we have a problem. And I think the doctor has indicated that there are issues. I understand that, there are issues. So what would be the least impactful way of doing that in a way that would address the more, the bigger concerns without creating a huge, I have a problem with the business license, too, because I think it, then we get into things like, you know, is it, does it meet the accessibility, you know, laws and all sorts of things? I mean, once you start getting down that track, I think you run into an awful lot of other issues. So trying to keep it more to the property owner and complying with basic, what I call good neighbor policies, would be my thought, but I'm open to suggestions from our other board members. Supervisor Crocker?
Yeah, I would, I haven't ever really been set on one path or not, but I think Mr. Cook brought up a great point that the standards, I think that it's important that we include teeth to be able, for the, if there are a few bad players that we have, that we are able to take actions to try and alleviate some of those problems. But for the vast majority that are good players, that they can continue to run and operate and do their thing and provide a valuable resource to the county from not only a tourism standpoint, but from a property owner's standpoint. So if it sounds like, you know, just enhancing the current registration process is what it sounds like from the board, then I would just, you know, figuring out a way that there's, that when we have that kind of check-off sheet that kind of looks at, you know, including some emergency information, you know, guidelines as far as the, you know, whether or not how large, how many individual occupants can be at a particular site, you know, those types of things, is kind of what I'm hearing, so.
Well, I know that up in our areas, Camp Nelson, Ponarosa, Alpine, Sequoia Crest, all those mountain communities, I know a lot of people that rent their places out. And probably, a lot of them are already registered with collecting TOT tax, but I've had no complaints. One of the number-one things would be if you get a resident that lives there permanently, like in Camp Nelson, would probably be, and the Ponarosa, those areas, people live there all the time. And you could have complaints from people renting property and we probably need some guidelines there. But I've had no complaints from anybody in the Fifth District and in the mountain communities. And I know of a lot of people that are renting their places out. So we do need guidelines. I can see that in many cases, especially in maybe the Three Rivers area. But like I say, I've had no complaints at all from any of the people up in my area. And I do own a place in the Crest, Sequoia Crest, but I've had nobody complain to me personally about any problems they've had with people renting their property out.
So if I think, Supervisor Crocker?
Do we do any type of audit, you know, checking ads and whatnot to see who's advertising?
That's what the tax collector's been doing.
The tax collector did that for the TOT. Now, as far as based on facts, when I talked about the size of the septic systems and what the perception was, we did, staff did, one of the early meetings, they were saying they're advertising 20 people in a two-bedroom house. Well, we went through and we had, went through all of the listings and that there was 300-plus things going on there. Well, when we searched and researched those 300, you searched Three Rivers, but some of them are up in Hume and some are down. So it works out to 150 or so, I believe, is what, approximately. Well, when we searched and researched those three hundred, you, you searched Three Rivers, but some of them are up in um uh Hume and some are down, so it works out to a hundred and fifty or so, I, I believe is what, approximately what we came up with. But then we looked and we looked at the, the number of bedrooms, the number of bathrooms, and what they were advertising for. And with the, throughout the whole process, the only ones that were advertising more than what that basic approach was, was a couple, uh, there was five parcels or, and only three of them were in Three Rivers, they were large lots with multiple residents or dwellings, and those were the ones that are advertising twenty-five people, forty, but they were all within the guidelines. So again, perception versus what we were able to research. Uh, just to comment on the, on the teeth of the matter, is if we just are giving guidelines, it's going to be hard to enforce. Uh, so we're going to have to look creatively, if, if we're creating some guidelines with no enforcement, it's going to be a challenge. As far as the question of business license versus um like an administrative use permit, we do business license on a fairly unique things, tattoo parlors, circuses, you know, some, some really unique things. But we also do commercial river rafting, that's a business license, but we really process it through the RMA as if it's an administrative use permit, and, and we go up and do an a, a onsite inspection of where they do the print-in of the, the rafts and things. Also, like cottage food industry, we do administrative use permits if someone's wanting to, to do stuff out of their kitchen and stuff. So there's, there's a, a wide gamut of, of what can be done. And, and again, on, on, there's three universal things as far as what you're looking at for most of these things, it's about having a, a, a property manager being able to respond to the property within an hour or forty-five minutes, having a contact number that can be answered, there's lots of those things that can easily be put into that. But again, it's guidelines, it's wording, and then teeth, I don't know.
Well, I, I, I mean, and I don't, I, I think, I appreciate the idea of having teeth, but also there is a sense of kind of progressive uh, you know, experimentation. So if you talk about having guidelines and then seeing how the response is to that, maybe that, maybe that's sufficient. Uh, if you have bad actors, then maybe you have to come back and you do something more. I, again, I start with the idea, I'd like to personally minimize the impediments to people renting, renting out their properties, recognizing there can be real problems, that they need to be addressed. Um, one of the benefit, one of the good things is that, you know, from, from the typical property owner, they have a vested interest in that property being maintained and not destroyed and retaining good relationship with their neighbors and so forth, so generally speaking, people are going to want to be concerned about that. They don't really want to rent out the place that people are going to come in and thrash it or create problems and all that. Uh, so I think there's some built-in kind of incentives for people to do the right thing with rentals, recognizing you don't always control the people who come in there and you maybe, you may not be happy with, with the people that you rent, that could happen, like was said, on an individual basis as well. Um, so I, I, does that give you some idea of how we're going forward? I don't think we want to go with full-fledged, you know, um.
Like it all across.
And I, because I know like even if you go to the coastal areas, I mean, they have some very stringent sort of things, not, not, not maybe as bad as what you heard, saw down in, in Death, not Death Valley.
Close enough.
Yeah, close enough, yeah. But, but I might, I think the idea that the board would like to sort of move into this area, address these issues, but in a conservative fashion, and, and that's kind of the direction I think that you're getting from the board.
Very good, I, we'll take that into consideration and we'll come back with some options and, and show you that. And again, uh, actually, you do find oftentimes when houses are being converted to um short-term rentals and utilizing that, we see lots of uh improvements, we see the building permits, they buy new furniture, they really, most of these properties are kept up better than a single-family residence actually, because again, they, they need to do it for their, for their own marketing and for their own use when they're not being rented out.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Not going anywhere.
And that will bring us to item number thirty-two, a request from the Resource Management Agency to approve general plan initiation number G P I seventeen dash zero zero three. This is in your neck of the woods, Mr. Ennis.
Yes, this is for a general plan initiation for a, for a parcel in East Porterville. So the request is uh changing the land use designation from low-density residential to neighborhood commercial on a half-acre parcel, and change the zone district from P D C two to just C two, eliminating the planned development overlay. Uh, the applicant is proposing a, a Mexican restaurant on this facility. Uh, the location is on the northeast side of Springville Avenue, approximately four hundred feet south of the Success Drive within the East Porterville Urban Development Boundary. Uh, again, like I mentioned, proposed restaurant, some tables open, patio seating. The vicinity map, you can see uh where it's located there is just, just after um Success and Springville kind of split off together, uh, it's just right there. Um, site's identified there. All of that surrounding area is zoned um commercial as well. This is a proposed site plan, see the parking spaces and, and the restaurant with a covered patio area, um, small restaurant, a little covered patio and a, and a storage facility with the parking. This is a large tree that's right here that kind of takes up that area. Again, the existing zoning is P D C two, so this project's consistent with that already, but we're trying to do the right thing and get the land, underlying land use designation to be consistent with the general plan. And um, and you can see the existing general plan shows it as a low-density residential. This is the official zoning map that we're proposing for it to be C two. And uh, per our settlement and agreement with the uh City of Porterville, that the city standards and designations are applicable within the county adopted city urban development boundary, except the land inside of the East Porterville uh community, U D B. The area, uh, the spirit of the area plan and the settlement agreement uh of two thousand fourteen, Tulare County will work cooperatively with the City of Porterville. We've contacted the city on a number of occasions, when they first came in for a E R C meeting and on, and as we're coming forward with this project now for your consideration to, to approve the submittal of an application, uh, and we haven't had any response back from the city. So that just really concludes the, the, the project, or the, the request here is just to approve the G P I to authorize the applicant to, to file an uh, an application to amend the general plan from low-density residential to neighborhood commercial, and that essentially matches the on-use designation for all of the surrounding area, because it all is commercial use right now. So that would conclude staff's report.
Questions, comments from board members?
No, that's just, uh, isn't that just down the street from where the new Dollar Store was supposed to go?
The Dollar General is, is probably nine hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred feet away from there, yeah, yeah.
Has there any?
Have the name of the restaurant, do you?
What?
Have the name on the restaurant yet?
I don't, I don't know that I know the name, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Ennis's.
L something.
Ennis, L Ennis.
L Miguel's.
Uh, is there anything from the public on this matter? If not, entertain a motion.
A move for approval.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor.
Second.
Crocker. All in favor, please sign, no, please cast your votes. Vote is, uh, support is unanimous, very good, thank you. And that will take us to item number thirty-three, uh, requests from Resource Management, Management Agency and the Fire Department, let's not forget them, to approve a categorical exemption, and uh I'll let you proceed from there.
Good morning, re- thank you at the Resource Management Agency. I know this was a bit of an RMA-heavy day, so I wanted to get my part into.
Yeah, might be a break.
Um, before I do start, I wanted to thank the clerk and the C A O and board staff when we heard that next week's meeting was going to be canceled, we crammed you up with a lot of stuff, so thank you for working with us on this.
Thank you for, for your part, so we could cancel it next week.
Um, so this is the first of two tree mortality presentations regarding funding opportunities. Um, as you're well aware, the tree mortality issue is widespread and massive, and no single entity is really going to be able to deal with this alone, so in that spirit, um, we're teaming up with the C A O's office and the Fire Department here to present one uh, uh program to you. The second will be a program dealt directly through the Fire Department or a grant. So a little bit of background here on the process and the project, Fire will go into a bit of detail on what the actual proposed work would be, and then I'll go into a bit more on what the actual requests will be. So with that, I'll hand it off to Mr. Coyne on some of the background.
Good morning.
Good morning, Eric.
Um, I think it's no surprise to this board, we've been very involved with forest management, that unfortunately we have one of the highest, we have the highest level of tree mortality. What exactly does that mean? As of December, and these are based on flights that are done in uh late fall, it shows a hundred twenty-nine thousand, a hundred twenty-nine million dead trees within the state. We have twenty-five million um dead trees just in our county. This is really alarming because this is almost a doubling year over year. The progression is really um amazing here in Tulare County. So uh, we have removed, in the last two years we've been removing trees, we have removed uh on a collaborative basis about thirty-five hundred trees. This is generally costs, it's about the two-hundred thousand dollars. We have done this internally collaboratively with the local and the state and a federal effort with our firefighters, um, County Fire, RMA, parks, uh, it's really been a team approach to get this done. It's always about the bottom line because we have tremendous need and yet we're challenged with multiple statewide disasters uh to, to do this and not bust our budget. We have aggressively pursued reimbursement through the California Disaster Assistance Act. You'll see, we've already collected thirty-five thousand, and we're, we're at thirty-eight thousand and we're billing another thirty-five thousand. So um, that's, that, that leads to about a thirty-seven percent cost recovery. Now, this is all about fire response, so uh the Fire Department wants to talk to you about where and when we're going to cut trees.
The primary emphasis of this project here, what we're calling Phase Three, is along county roads, so that would be our involvement, but the Fire Department was uh very generous in helping us pick the locations.
Uh, good morning, so for Phase Three, as you see on the map there, there's four separate projects, and those are a tree mortality plan focused on projects that are, will secure vital evacuation routes and secure safe areas of refuge.
Safe area.
Yep, Jeff McLaughlin. Safe areas of refuge, refuge from fleeing, uh, from citizens fleeing fast-moving wildland fires. So our plan, like I said, has four designated projects, it's a collaborative effort between CAL FIRE, uh, RMA, County Fire, and U S Forest Service. Uh, the first project will begin there at the Western Divide, basically at the termination of Highway one ninety where it becomes um county-maintained road all the way through, halfway through into the Western Divide. So if you follow the divide all the way down into Parker Pass, that'd be four separate projects, but we're calling them two, uh, two projects for this uh, uh, for these slides here. Um, then the next one, the blue one you see there is Parker Pass, which takes you from the Western Divide west down into California Hot Springs. The pink one you see at the top there is the Ponarosa Community, and we are proposing a community defense zone project just adjacent to the community. If you can go to the next slide. Then our final one is the Isham Valley Project, which uh connects our Phase Two project and completes the next phase, which would be taking it from the forest boundary to Heartland Christian Camp, and then back around to Pierce Valley Road, which would complete an evacuation route for that area. Uh, all these projects are working in tree mortality areas that have at least forty-five trees or more dead per acre, so very dense tree mortality. Total estimated treated acres in these four projects is twenty-one, or excuse me, two thousand one hundred and five acres, we estimate that to be about sixty thousand trees.
These locations not only are um high priority because of the evacuation, but also to prevent potential trees falling on roads in the actual uh collision that may occur within that, so that's sort of the nexus there.
Again, this is collaborative, um, we're working directly with the Forest Service uh because here in our county, as you know, half the, the landmass is public lands, the majority of the trees that we're talking about are within the Forest Service or um National Parks Federal jurisdiction. So we've worked very closely with them to um, the Forest Supervisor and their upper management to where could we cut trees and stay within the guidelines of the law and policy. This has been very successful. The uh Western Divide Ranger, in your packet you'll see that he's already reviewed all these projects with our uh state, local, and federal um firefighters, and he's, he's, he's reviewed them, he's signed off on these, he's, because of the urgent need, it, uh, they've also gone through their uh, their N I P A analysis, uh, and this meets their federal guidelines. This is something that I think Jeff was sharing with me, has been in their work plan since ninety-five or before, to address some of these areas. This represents, in, in the past, we have done this work with county staff or kind of amongst ourselves, we're full-time workers. We're trying to do the most good as quick as we could with our internal workforce. We've also been trying to take advantage of uh California Disaster Assistance Act money. This provides for, if you have a statewide declaration, if you meet the guidelines, you can get reimbursed for eligible costs. This is something we did in the drought, this is something we've done in the tree mortality process. Um, basically the C D A A uh will reimburse you for labor that is contracted out or used with extra help personnel. It does require a twenty-five percent local match, so this can be a challenge because how much of a disaster can you afford to treat at any one time? Uh, the pure fire, there's nothing good about a wildfire like that, but it did remove a tremendous amount of fuel that, that could have threatened far more harms than the one that was consumed. So on the funding, we're, we're, we're looking at C D A A, how do we fund the, the disaster response? C D A A is replenished, it's fronted on a, it comes on a reimbursement basis, so it's, because we're focused our efforts on road maintenance, uh, this C D A reimbursement's replenish the road fund. The remaining balance we've paid in the last two years, this is just disclosure of how we paid for the past removal efforts, it's been remarkably low for the amount of work achieved. We have the, at the state, we have a lot of people looking at our process because we're doing this for well under a hundred dollars per tree. Eldorado, for comparison, is now doing a contract for forty trees for four-hundred thousand dollars. And the statewide average for tree removals when Supervisor Worthley and I are up at the task force, is averaging more, about a thousand dollars per tree. So the twenty-five percent solution, how do we?
There's a different kind of connotation.
Yeah, how do we, uh, I, I was trying to do the movie analogy, because as our C A O says, uh, if you haven't read Cicero or uh gone way back, then he, he goes with the movie analogies, and then we get to Sherlock Holmes. Um, this is a solution that actually Supervisor Worthley, representing us on the task force, the electeds in the ten high-disaster counties came up with this solution, presented this to the governor and the legislature, and they reacted. And so in order to try to um make C D A eligible cost a hundred percent reimbursable, the legislature um designated six million dollars in grants that could be applied for by our, by our counties. Um, this is one of the actions we're asking you today. Uh, they have allocated five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars uh for grant force, that in turn would allow us to, if we did full recovery, to remove two-point-two million dollars' width of trees, and uh if we can target our efforts to C D, C D A A eligible activities, it's intended to be reimbursable. This is going to mean a new change in our fiscal policy, our fiscal strategy, to instead of doing it ourselves, contracting it out. And we, we're kind of headed here anyway because of the scale of the problem, um, you know, we're averaging about forty thousand pothole repairs a month, except we're doing tree removals and then that we're kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul, and you know, we lose some, some workforce there. So we have um, we have some proposed solutions. This is the labor outlook we're looking at going forward. We have several options, we could look at CAL FIRE inmate labor, well, that, that's great, they work for baloney sandwiches when they're available, but one phone call and you're out responding to a wildfire. So there, we'll, it'll be rare when we can use them going forward. California Conservation Corps is the same thing. They did help us with uh the chief's intervention uh up in uh Balance Rock in Samaria's last time, but again, they, that's just an option, it's not something to be relied on. The fire chief is going to talk about the hand crew. This is our best option, in our opinion, the best bang for the buck and the best ability to respond and not get pulled away to a fire emergency. Sea Set Sequoia workforce, workforce is, is another version of that hand crew. They can, they, they're not timber harvesters, they can clean up um debris, they can assist the people who are trained in removing larger trees, and uh they're, they, they have a several-year history of doing this. Um, of course, private, private contractors are something we'll be exploring because that's uh, uh, location, 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 they may be able to do it better than we can. There will be some full-time county workers, but we're trying to minimize this. Uh, a lot of this will be um through supervision and management.
Good morning. Unlike everything else, I'm involved with, I'll be brief, can you go back one slide? Can you go back one slide?
Can you state your name for the record?
Charlie Norman, Tulare County Fire Department. Good morning again. Looking back at some of our past incidents, and you try and predict things based on past experiences, fire history, weather events, some of these options that we've used in the past, the flooding last year was an anomaly because we had two weeks of no fires to where we were able to use CAL FIRE, we were able to use inmate crews. Had that happened any other time than June 23rd, we would have been out there putting our fingers in the dyke collectively with all our extra firefighters. So we did get lucky on that. And being that you don't want to have these behaviors and these practices occur in the future, you want to plan for what's going to happen. Go to the next slide, please. Having a crew boss and a hand crew, it's used in other agencies, Kern County, all these agencies throughout the state are having issues with tree mortality. This gives us CICCS, the California Incident Command System, certified personnel who run a crew boss and have nine extra-help seasonal firefighters. They will be precluded from firefighting activities, they'll be solely on timber removal. We did like, we did have the firefighter title just in case there is pile burning or associated burning with that. But having these people, and this will also give us a preview of future employees, potential employees, we'll see what the work ethic is, we'll see what type of commitment they have to the Tulare County Fire Department, and just trying to coordinate all these resources, herding cats, this gives us a little more ownership into trying to have the thing done within our own acceptable timelines. Should I talk about...
So how do those extra help, how does that hand crew get around? And that's where, I guess, we come in. One of the requests in the package here today is a, a request to basically waive a bid process so that we can go ahead and purchase two four-wheel-drive crew cab-type trucks to move those crews around. Due to time constraints and wanting to get in here as quickly as possible, we're requesting the waiver of the bid process there. So with that...
Here's the list of requests.
What's that?
And here's the list of requests.
Yes, I, I won't read them all, but I think the highlights are waive the, are the SEQUO requirement, find the, that there is substantial evidence, that there is a SEQUO categorical exemption, and authorize and approve the chairman of the board to sign the Local Assistance for Tree Mortality Grant Program application in the amount of $550,000, 378. And then the personnel resolutions to add one extra-help crew boss and nine extra-help seasonal firefighters, and for the job specifications for those classes, approve the capital asset purchase of the vehicles, the four-wheel-drive vehicles, not to exceed $90,000, and waive the bid process for that. So with that, if you have any questions for any one of us, we're happy to respond.
Questions or comments?
I didn't see anything in here from environmental groups in the Sierra Club to help sponsor this and pay for it, since they're the ones against any kind of forest management. I didn't see anything.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion to approve?
You can read that like you want to, but it's...
Is that a motion to approve?
That's a motion to approve.
Alright, we have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Crocker.
Yeah, I, I did have a, a comment to make.
But you are seconding the motion.
Yes, I will second the motion. But I, I appreciate staff's efforts in, in seeking funding for tree mortality. You know, about a year ago, I attended several meetings, including Sierra Nevada Conservancy, and a comment that was made was that we were the only county in the high-risk areas that, that had not received some of the grant funding, and so there was a strong urge for us to, to seek those dollars. So I appreciate the fact that we are looking for those dollars to help augment our, our issues. That's it.
And thanks to Eric and RMA for their hard work. I know, especially getting us to us today, I know that was, this was hoping, they were, would like to have it next, next week, but they, they pushed it forward to move it to this point in time. It obviously is an urgent matter, it needs, it needs approval. So we have a motion and a second of the further discussion. Not, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, thank you very much. And that brings us to our final item before closed session, which is another good use of funding for a forest health grant. This comes directly from the Fire Department.
Absolutely.
Charlie Norman.
Many more supporting roles. Good morning again, CAO, Chairman of the Board, County Council, multiple councilors. As we have a, a several-pronged approach to trying to accomplish some of these things, there are some climate investment forestry health grant that we're trying to access. And basically, those are fundings that reduce greenhouse gases, protect upper watersheds, projects should promote long-term storage of carbon in forest trees and soils. And as Chief McLaughlin and I sat down and started thinking about carbon output of trees burning versus cutting them down, we knew we were going to need help in this particular arena. So we were able to get RMA, Hector in his shop from SEQUO were able to give us some help on this particular item. And all this is awarded to provide a community defense zone hazard tree zone removal in Camp Nelson in the area of Slick Rock, reducing wildland fire risks. This is a no-match grant. It's, it's a conceptual proposal, so we have the grant, as you've seen in your packet, filled out with the exception of Section Seven, which we will need some much more environmental work on. It informs applicants no later than May of this year, and we'll move forward at that point with the application. This scope of work will be completed, final agreements by June 30th of 2020, so end of fiscal year. Expect all grant activities to be completed no the three years from the award date. I'll have Chief McLaughlin briefly talk about the two project areas, and we'll try and keep things brief.
Good morning, Jeff McLaughlin, Division Chief. So the first project is the Camp Nelson Project. It's broken into two projects. It's estimated at 425 acres and surrounding the community of Camp Nelson. The fuel reduction project reduces the spread from fire from structures into the wildland and then vice versa. This collaborative project with the US Forest Service was selected due to the proximity of private property, public infrastructure, and state and federal direct protection areas. This proposal meets the objective of the Camp Nelson Fuel Reduction Project Guidelines, the US Forest Service's Arterials Root Hazard Tree Removal Plan, and the Tulare County Hazard Tree Removal Plan. This project will be performed in two phases, like I said earlier, and currently data is being collected to quantify the environmental benefits in relation to PM10, stored carbon and greenhouse gases. Our second project, proposed project, is the Slick Rock Fuel Reduction and Hazard Tree Removal Project. This site consists of 365 acres encompassing a geographical area located downslope from the Mountain Home State Demonstration Forest, Bulge Park, and numerous public recreation facilities. This collaborative project with the US Forest Service, CAL FIRE, and County Fire secures an area that is geographically prone to the start and spread of wildfire. This proposal meets the objectives of the Slick Rock Fuel Reduction Project Guidelines, the Tulare County Hazard Tree Removal Plan, and will be performed in one phase. Data still is currently being collected to quantify the environmental benefit in relation to PM10, stored carbon, and greenhouse gases. On both of these projects, the US Forest Service has had NEPA approved for several years and just didn't have the funding or the resources to complete them. If you look at this project specifically, it's in the bottom of the Wasatchon Drainage, which is where the pure fire started. It's just on the opposite side of the drainage, so we all know how fire spreads in, in that drainage so far in the last year or so, so this is a very prone area. This also connects the beginning of the Tree Mortality Phase One project that happened along Barrett Creek and Bulge Park.
Chief, how, how large is the Slick Rock project approximately?
I think it's 365.
Acres?
365 acres.
Thank you.
So back to the money. When you got asked for money, the chief puts me up here. The grant request is for $800,000. It's a no-match grant. This is a concept proposal. If they like the concept, they invite us to do a full proposal, and then we will have full details on what rules we're following. We look at the rules that they've telegraphed. We know that they'll get grant, we'll get credit for our local match, and we'll always have some skin in the game, so we think we'll be, we hope to be very competitive with this. The, we do estimate that, because this is not tied to roads, this is tied to community protection zones, if you will, defense zones, this will take cash flow from the general fund or another source. So we are telegraphing that. We would apply, we apply now, we would hear in May, we would get, we anticipate an invitation to apply, and then the funding agreements may not come for a year and a half. We think, from what we've heard, we're, we're prepared with the project right now, whereas other people are still analyzing this. We've unfortunately had some pent-up need, and we've had these projects developed for a long time, especially the federal partners, we all, we all want to see these done. So if this is awarded, cash would not be needed until 1920 or 2122. This actually, while we would like to do it tomorrow, this kind of works well with our plan because we've got 2.2 million dollars to the trees to figure out how to cut, and then we can move right naturally into this protection zones. So we wanted to be transparent that the best way to, to be competitive is to show your work and to get in line. Should, should we be awarded, we will need to find a different source of funding. And so that's why we're, we're telegraphing this need now. With that said, we have two requests for you. Authorize the submission of a grant concept proposal for the California Climate Investments Forestry Health Grant to provide community, the defense zone and hazard tree removal in Camp Nelson and Slick Rock not to exceed 800,000. Authorize the fire chief for his designated assign and submit the grant concept proposal. And of course, we will address any questions.
Any questions? Not, entertain a motion.
Mike.
Mike?
You know, I was just going to say, is there any chance that maybe the feds would throw some money at us too down the road?
Well, we know you're going to be very persuasive in your state platform and your federal platform, so that, yes, I think they, we hope so. We do know that they put 56% of their national budget in a wildland response, so, but to be honest, who knows? We've been asking for active forest management as long as I've been a county employee, so...
What, what they have done up until now, essentially, they did reallocate some funding to this issue, but primarily they've been using their fire crews when they're not engaged in fire to knock down their own trees on their own lands that are in danger of their own improvements, campgrounds, that sort of thing. So whether, whether they're going to be going beyond that, I, I don't know, but, you know, this is a great opportunity for us to do something that's really significant to, as a preventative measure, you know? So it's, it's great for us to pursue these grants if we can get them, and, and I, I'm sure we'll find a way to front the money until we get reimbursed to, to move, move the project forward. The need is now.
And what's different in our recent conversations with the Forest Supervisor and, and his senior staff that will continue, will play with the new supervisor, this is an urgent need of theirs. We're helping them, we're providing a solution to essentially their problem because it affects our communities. And so I think that they will provide whatever skin in the, in the game that they can, depending on their resources.
Okay, a move for approval.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes. And the vote is unanimous of our approval. That concludes our open session. We have items for closed session council.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Item A, B, D, and E are off calendar. Items C, F, G, and H will be heard in closed session, but I do not expect any announcements out.
Very well, thank you. Thank you for all being here today.
I don't know what made me think of it, but we have food vendors now out in the parking lots, maybe because it's almost noon, maybe that's what made you think about it.